February Board Meeting for the Penridge School District. I want to thank you for being patient. We were in executive session and I apologize for getting here a bit late. If you will, help me salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have not been able to convince him to come back to Penridge from Florida. Good evening again, Dave.
Hi.
You are now on the air and we are commencing the meeting.
Okay, good.
All right. Mrs. Cron, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Casper.
Here.
Mr. Deming.
Here.
Mrs. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Agomo.
Here.
Mr. Sarnice.
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mrs. Yardley.
Here.
Dr. Yornell.
Here. Thank you. At this point, we'll have questions and comments from guests. If you will, please state your name and your municipality of residence and please limit your talk to about three minutes or less. I have three names on the list, the first of which, we started from the bottom up, so I'm not sure where to start, but I'll start with Mr. Rumbold.
Andrew Rumbold from Perksy Borough. I sent an email to the board after the last meeting with some questions on it and didn't get any responses, so I'm here tonight to get responses, hopefully to these questions. One of the things I'd like to know is, how can this board be contemplating the extravagant spending on Phase Two of a stadium at nearly $3 million and between $20,000 and $70,000 for a truck trailer package for the marching band while facing a $10 million deficit and a possible 15 percent increase? And regarding these expenses, specifically, how do these expenses contribute to a thorough and efficient system of public education as mandated by the state constitution?
Is that the entirety of your question or just the first of the questions?
Well, that's, I mean, I'm sure you got my email, so there was a couple of questions in here that, you know, I'd like to get the answers to. So, I mean, specifically, how do these, you know, $3 million for, $3 million more for a stadium, $70,000 for a vehicle for the marching band, how do these contribute specifically to what's required in our constitution as a thorough and efficient system of public education?
Well, I think, Mr. Rumbold, you are probably aware, certainly, I am aware, that everyone has a different definition of what thorough and efficient means for a public school system. To me, the co-curricular activities like the band certainly are an important part of the educational program at Penridge. And I think the sports activities that we have and which will use the stadium are also important to our students in that this is a community that does not have a lot of places where students can spend their spare time or do spend their spare time. I think sports are a great way of doing that, learning competition, learning good sportsmanship, and a lot of other activities. So certainly, there are, have been, and is, significant support for the new stadium, I think, and that can be shown by the ad hoc committee that we did, which is doing fundraising. So I understand that not everyone supports that, but I believe the board has made a commitment to do so.
Are these activities, you called them co-curricular, are they extracurricular or co-curricular?
Well, I called the band co-curricular and that's what I meant. And by that, what that means is that there are classes in the high school that are, where band is taught, where instrumental music is taught, and where you receive a grade, hence the co-curricular. The sports are extracurricular.
Okay, so the board considers it financially prudent to spend another $3 million on an extracurricular activity when we're staring at a $10 million deficit this year? So I understand that.
Well, you'd have to ask each and every board member and that's not what we're going to do tonight. What I could say is I will talk to the budget issue later on when I give my report.
Is the school district going to consider increasing class size, eliminating class offerings, and reducing administration to meet budgetary goals?
Everything is on the table currently.
And I'd also like to know the status of the bargaining with the, with the teachers' union and I'd like to know if the board is negotiating hard for concessions, including the option, which is negotiable in all contracts, to require the union to collect their own union dues. I'd like to know if that's an issue that's being discussed in the...
Let me speak to that. I'd advise the board not to comment publicly with respect to specific issues that are presented by the negotiations, both with the teachers and the sports staff.
Okay, so there's just, there's ongoing negotiations and no indication, well, I'd encourage the board, whoever's involved with the negotiations, that the issue of dues collection is entirely negotiable and I don't know why the school districts, you know, collects dues for a private political organization. They should be collecting their own dues from their own members. You know, I guess in, in wrapping up, I mean, you know, I answered some of the questions I answered, I didn't know who voted against the preliminary budget because I had to leave early, the meeting was still going on at 10 o'clock at night, but I applaud Mrs. Yardley and Mrs. Miller for voting against that. I'd just like to say that, I mean, I don't know how you can consider it fiscally responsible to spend all this money on these activities that are extracurricular and my opinion is that this fundraising is something that should have been considered before the spending. These activities should stand on their own and if people in the community judge them worthy, they will donate the money instead of it having to be extracted in the taxes that I'm expected to pay every year to stay in my home. So, you know, I'd like to encourage, I know that the votes tonight to spend this $3 million and y'all are probably going to approve it, but I'd like to applaud anybody that stands up and votes against it. So, you know, one of the things that I always think about and I put in the bottom of the email here is that when I recollect my own school experiences, you know, from Buckingham Elementary and Central Bucks East, when I think about pride and what I remember, I don't remember stadiums, I don't remember buildings and facilities, I remember people. And that's what I think we're losing sight of here. You know, we talked about in the past before putting this turf field in, well, the kids can go outside and play right after it rains. Well, when I was in high school and it rained, we ran around the gym. I don't understand why that's not good enough anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Healy.
I would like to speak on that issue too. I think, you know, the board is obviously going in the direction of Phase Two of Hellman, but perhaps this is not the year to do it. 15 percent tax increase for something that could be delayed for perhaps another year until things may happen where you don't have to pay these exorbitant pension costs that eat into your budget. I'm just looking at it from the perspective of taxpayers who, you know, we had a nice jump last year in taxes and then this year it looks like we'll have another jump, but it could be mitigated by postponing the Phase Two and then perhaps the legislature will do something about the horrendous amount of pension money that you have to pay. And again, everything is about priorities and I think that in the last couple of years we haven't really taken into consideration the impact on the taxpayers, especially seniors who have lost a lot in the stock market and living on a fixed pension. So I urge you to postpone the vote and think about or rethink whether you really want to do Phase Two this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rumbold. Mrs. Furrow.
Sue Furrow, West Rock Hill Township. As noted in your minutes, I am concerned that you have left a lot of things in the budget that could come out and reduce that $10 million deficit that you're running. But I looked up some other numbers just to keep things interesting. One of the things that you, as a board, have control over is the local sources for tax income. I'm not going to hold you responsible for state and federal, but you are directly responsible for local sources. In 2013, local sources were 88 million, 88.9 million. In 2014, it was 88.4 million. It actually came down a little bit by about a half million dollars. In 2015, it went from 88.4 to 92 million in the budget. That was a 3.6 million or a 4.1 percent increase in one year because it's not just property taxes that we pay. We pay 1 percent of whatever we make. We get a raise, we get extra hours, we take a second job. School district gets 1 percent of that automatically, no questions asked. So it's not just our property tax, it's the money with which we pay our property tax that you dip into. From 2015 to 2016, the projection is to go from 92 million in local taxes to 106.6 million in local taxes. That is a one-year increase of 14.5 million dollars or 15 percent. If I take the jump from 2013, let's see, 2014, I'm sorry, 88.4 million to 2016, that's two years, that is a jump of 18.2 million in two years' time that you want to take out of the local economy and redirect towards the school district. That is a 20.6 percent increase in a two-year time period. I don't find that acceptable. Let's talk about the debt that's outstanding. In 2012, end of the year, we owed 132 million. By the end of 2012-13, we had paid down 5 million and we owed 127. Then we paid down another 7.5 million and at the end of 2012, we reduced that to 132 million, although that number doesn't look quite right. When we got to 2013, we paid 5 million down. 2014, we borrowed and now we owe 4.4 million more. So we went from paying down $5 million per year in debt to increasing debt by 4.4 million. That's quite a swing, $7 million swing in borrowing, okay? You're taxing us more and that's not enough, you're borrowing. Debt service comes along with debt. 2014, it was 10 million point three. 2015, a 977,000 increase to 11.3 million. 900, or 2016, 12.3 million, another 993,000. 2017 is projected at 12,864,000, which is 548,000 more. You are driving this district into a financial hole that I don't know if it will ever recover from. These debts that you're running up are unpaid future tax bills and I feel sorry for the little first graders who will never come close to enjoying the supplies, the class sizes, the equipment that their older brothers and sisters have had because we will be paying back debt. This is a shame, plus the people that are losing their homes.
Thank you, Mrs. Furrow. Anyone else wish to comment? Not begin the meeting with the consent calendar. Are there items on the consent calendar that board members would like to have voted on separately? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar consisting of items A through J on the agenda? I have a motion for Mr. Deming to have a second. Thank you. Moved by Mr. Deming and seconded by Mrs. Yardley to approve the consent calendar. Comments or questions for board? No, sorry, Mrs. Yardley?
I just wanted to make a comment that on the superintendent's personnel report in the addendum, we have resignation of two of our administrators, so I just want to say that I'm going to be voting for it, but with regret, it's not what I want to vote for. So I want to thank them for their service. They're not leaving yet, but I just want to say I'm voting for that with a little bit of sadness, so thank you for your service.
Any other comments on this motion on the floor? Not, I too want to thank Dr. Bivard and Mrs. Johnson for their service to the Penridge School District. Both will be leaving the end of this school year. We certainly appreciate that they gave us advance notice, which particularly in today's climate where it's more difficult to hire people and it takes a longer time often, but mostly, we appreciate the efforts that they have made over the years to try to improve the district. I know Dr. Ratigan will have large shoes to fill in both cases, so I want to, like Mrs. Yardley, I want to say absolutely I will vote for this and so you have asked for this retirement, but with regret in both cases, and thank you.
And if I could add, Dr. Yornell, though I've only worked with both of them for a year and a half, I can honestly say they are both really tremendously hard workers that both have the best interests of the district at heart and really gave a lot of their time and effort to help Penridge to be the best that it can be. So, thank you to both of them.
Mr. Deming.
Mr. President, I think it would be appropriate for this committee, or excuse me, for this board, to give these two upstanding people a round of applause and thanks.
Anyone else like to comment on the motion? If not, all those in favor. I. Posed. Motion carries 9-0. At this point, we'll move to the student liaison report. Mr. Callens.
Thank you, Dr. Yornell. Student Council's been very busy this past February. On the 13th, we hosted the 2015 Pennsylvania Association of Student Council's Region F Conference and this had about 700 students and advisors for a day-long leadership conference and they're coming from Bucks, Montgomery, Chester, Delaware, and Philadelphia counties. And it was actually one of the biggest conferences that this organization's had in quite a few years, so it was really exciting for us. It was an outstanding success and ran very smoothly. The guest speaker was very popular with both the students and the high school teachers who were watching the guest speaker as part of their in-service. So much appreciation goes out to the administration and the community and the faculty for cooperating and supporting Student Council throughout this event. It's been our biggest event in about five years since we hosted the state conference in 2009. Additionally, in this past Saturday, Student Council teamed up with Kaplan Test Prep to offer a practice SAT AC test, TE test, to any interested students and this was a great success as well and gives students the opportunity, in addition to the PSAT in the fall, to improve their test skills and find out which of the two tests would better suit them. Then this upcoming March is just as busy with various events. On March 17th, Student Council's been coordinating Red Cross blood drive for the students and faculty at Penridge High School. And just a fun fact, one pint of blood, which is the typical donation, can save up to three lives, so we're really pushing this. It's a big way for a community, or reaching out for more than just a Student Council event for the entire school. So Student Council will be signing up students 16 and older as well as faculty throughout the next month and donors will receive a free T-shirt, courtesy of the Red Cross, actually. And then finally, on a non-Student Council note, Stars at Penridge High School, as you may know, will be presenting four shows of Les Misérables from March 19th through 21st. And as a member of the behind-the-scenes part of the show, I can already blown away with the work that's being done on this show. It's a very difficult script and a very difficult show to prepare for and they're just doing a fantastic job. And tickets are only $10 and can be purchased through, reserved through email at tickets@starsofbuxcounty.net and there's flyers throughout the school and in the inside PSD email that was sent out today. But beyond that, that's all I have for this month.
Thank you, Mr. Callens, and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak briefly at the Student Council Conference. I wish I had even a tenth of the energy that the students, that the members who attended that, there were, as I understand it, students from at least five counties in the suburban Philadelphia area and obviously a large number in the auditorium when I was there. Tremendous energy and I know they do a lot of good things, including the Minthon and others, so I want to congratulate you on taking up the cudgel, so to speak, for this conference kind of late in the game and pulling it off very successfully. And fortunately, unlike most days this month or this winter, the weather kind of cooperated. You at least didn't get snow or ice, so thank you for doing that. At this point, on the president's report, first in terms of the right-to-know requests, since we started actually reporting this, we are up to $16,465, $66.95 on the eight requests that have occurred since October. Beyond that, I'd like to speak to the budget. Obviously, we had three of the public comment on that tonight, there've been articles in the newspaper. The number that seems to have captured everybody's attention is the 15.5 percent. And Mrs. Johnson gave a presentation at the February 12th meeting that involved about 20 pages of PowerPoint slides. That was the number that seems to have captured attention. I think the misunderstanding has been that that's a number that we could or would impose upon the public in terms of a tax increase. That is really the difference between the current estimated revenues and the current estimated expenditures, but Act One, which was enacted in 2006, means that the board cannot impose that even if they wanted to and I don't believe any board member now or in the past since Act One has wanted to do that. And the reason I say that is because the referendum, or I'm sorry, the Act One forces a referendum, a public referendum, if the number exceeds the index plus any exceptions that are taken. In this particular year that we're talking about, the index is 1.9 percent and that index is based on wage increases in the state or in the Commonwealth in the past. And so that is the base number. If exceptions were taken, and there are basically only two that can be taken, one would be relevant to special education increase cost. That's one that has been relatively flat and so most school districts do not attempt to take that particular exception. The other exception, which of course has been painful, as again, some of the speakers referenced, has been the PISERS increases that continue to occur. The good news is that the rate of increase is slowing, the bad news is that the increases continue and they are substantial. In fact, I believe Mrs. Johnson also made the point that this year, the money that would have to be paid to the state in terms of increased contributions for the PISERS is about $1.3 million. And so that eats up most of the 1.9 percent increase, leaving essentially nothing for other aspects of public education in Penridge. The exception of, of course, being something that the state has created is a very convoluted calculation, in my opinion, based on old numbers. I believe this year's calculation is based on 2011, 2012 monies that were sent to PISERS on behalf of employees in the Penridge District. So obviously, that's quite outdated and that means that the number, even though it in theory is an exception, is only a partial relief in terms of the total number. At the February 12th meeting, the board voted to put into the preliminary budget the ability to take that exception. And actually, Mrs. Johnson will file the exception papers, the state presumably will approve it, but there's nothing that requires the board to go forward with capturing those monies. And those monies amount to 750-some thousand dollars, so they're a relatively limited amount on the size of the budget. As time passes, the board and the administration obviously will have to pair the differential between the cost of, or the amount of expenses projected versus the revenues projected. And although the jump seems large this year, last year about this time, we were facing somewhat the same type of situation, excuse me, with a $10 million differential. This year, it's about $10.4 million. So obviously, as time passes, cuts will have to be made in the expenses or increases made in the revenues. And this year, it's more uncertain than most because this happens to be a new gubernatorial year, a new governor has been seated, his budget message will not be delivered until March 3rd. At present, Mrs. Johnson has adopted the old harmless tactic in terms of budgeting for the state's contribution. It comes to about $25, $26 million in our budget, not a huge percentage, on the order of 20 or 25 percent, but certainly significant. And it's hard to tell. The governor in his campaigning promised increases for public education. Obviously, the legislature did not promise that and the two have to get together to formulate a budget. As we all are very well aware of, during the Rendell years, the eight years of the Rendell administration, routinely budgets were not passed in a timely fashion. The budgets were supposed to be passed by the state by the 30th of June. One year, it was as late as December 23rd. So that makes it very difficult for anyone at the administrative or school board level to really predict what will happen and this year, of course, is more uncertain than most. We have four months, essentially. On June 22nd, we will be presumably passing a final budget that will have to be balanced and how that is balanced remains to be seen. There are a lot of unknowns still coming. Just tonight, we will be discussing or have reference to the vocational technical schools' proposed budget, which actually shows a slight decrease for Penridge, so that's good news for us. And at the meeting on the 12th, the intermediate unit budget that we voted on, which also showed a slight decrease, so those are both good news. We will see how this progresses, but certainly the 15.5 percent is theoretical, not actual, and it cannot be more than about 3.12, even if we took the exception and it took the entire index and there's no indication that that will be the case. So I just wanted to make those points since it's been a matter of great discussion. At this point, we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you, Dr. Yornell. First, I'd like to thank two of our schools for their displays in the district office meeting room. Last month was South and this month is West Rock Hill. And a special thank you to the Youth Elementary Home and School Association for the donation of an iPad Mini. I actually have quite a few good news items to share with you tonight. What I'm most proud of is the depth and diversity of the talents that our students possess, which I think you will hear. They are doing... They are doing outstanding work, whether it be academically, athletically, socially, and also in the arts. It's really nice to see how they are finding and developing their abilities. So we'll start with the arts. Three of our high school students have earned Gold Key Awards at the Philadelphia Regional 2015 Scholastic Art and Writing Awards and a spot in the national competition, all for drawing and illustration. Students are Abigail Gross, Veronica Mang, and Amy Beck. The national award winners will be announced in March. We also had 10 Silver Key Award winners at Regionals. Amy Beck for printmaking, Abigail Gross for art portfolio, Samuel Handy, digital art, Fiona Cobaz, printmaking, Veronica Mang, two awards for printmaking, Silas McBride, digital art, Samantha Malit, ceramics and glass, Michael Tripoli, mixed media, and Catherine Willard, mixed media as well. Three students earned honorable mention, Ryan Bond for painting, Silas McBride, digital art, and Quinn Tompkins, drawing and illustration. This competition is in its 92nd year. Teens in grades seven through 12 can apply in 28 categories of art and writing for their chance to earn scholarships and have their works exhibited and published. Congratulations to all awardees. These students are in the classes of Deborah Altman and Karen DePepe. We also had 26 school musicians participate in the Buxmont Band Festival last month at Indian Valley Middle School. This Wednesday evening, starting at 7:00, all six jazz groups from around the district will be performing on the high school stage. South Middle School, North, and Central, and Penrich High School will be represented by the best jazz musicians they have to offer in their maiden performance of the year. All the bands compete throughout March and April, and this is a great opportunity to hear them kick off their seasons. Richard Hayes, Sarah Hawthorne, Emily Hughes, and Sam Kribda will be representing Penrich at the 2015 Pennsylvania Music Educators Association Region Six Choir this Thursday and Friday at Marple Newtown High School. This is a great honor, because the choir consists of 160 singers from Bucks Montgomery, Chester, and Delaware County private and public schools. Next is academics and extracurricular. I am proud to announce we have two seniors who have been named finalists in the National Merit Scholarship Competition. Lauren Fosbender and Roger Fowler are among 15,000 students across the nation to qualify as finalists, and now are eligible for any number of financial awards based on their abilities, skills, and accomplishments, without regard to gender, race, ethnic origin, or religious preference. A variety of information is available for NMSC selectors to evaluate. They look at the finalist academic record, information about the school's curricula and grading system, two sets of test scores, the high school's official written recommendation, information about the students' activities in leadership, and the finalist's own essay. So good luck to Lauren and Roger. Our high school debate team is enjoying another outstanding season with Coach Lisa Maderick. The team finished the regular season with a record of 27-5, which was good enough to become first-place coach-champions of the Lipton Debate League. The team moves into the semifinal debate round beginning March 3rd. On February 7th, 19 high school students participated in the TSA Region Five competition at Strayer Middle School in Quakertown against 26 other high schools in Bucks Montgomery, Philadelphia, and Chester Counties. Based on their performances, 15 of them qualified for state competition in April at Seven Springs Resort. The team of Tom Cantor, Hamza Makadne, Andrew Trueblood, and Chris White took first place in the robotics competition. Penrich also took a second, a third, and two fourths in other competitions. As Nick mentioned in his report, Student Council hosted the Region F Conference and did a great job pulling together a leadership program for more than 600 visitors. I was very proud of all of you. On to athletics, where eight of our wrestlers are competing in the finals of the District One East Class AAA Tournament at Interboro High School as we speak. Six of the finalists have pins in the semifinals, with five of them coming in the first period. Congratulations also to Coach R. Norley for being named League Coach of the Year. Meanwhile, the boys' basketball team earned its first-ever spot in the state playoffs with a win over Coatsville in the District One Tournament. We're waiting to find out when and where that game will be played. And of course, there's our cheerleaders. They placed three teams in the top 10 at the Universal Cheerleading Association's High School National Championship in Orlando, Florida, against more than 600 teams from 37 states. The varsity medium division one team earned 10th place, the small varsity non-tumbling team ninth, and the junior varsity team earned fifth. This was the first time Penrich ever attended the national championship, so their goal was to get through as many rounds as possible. The fact that all three teams advanced to the final rounds in their division and then placed in the top 10 in the nation is unbelievable. Before Nationals, Penrich won the 2015 Suburban One League Championship and the 2015 District One Championship, and then placed in the top five at the PIAAA State Championship. Coach Lindsay Rapp was named the PIAA GTN Coach of the Year. So Dr. Yornel and Board members, I can't say enough about all the wonderful things our students are doing. I continue to be proud of them.
Thank you. We'll move to the committee reports. The first committee is Activities. Mrs. Yardlin?
Hey Claire, has, there has not been a meeting since the Board last met, but I do have one motion. So I move to approve the Memorandum of Understanding between the Penrich Board of Education and Penrich Educational Support Professionals Association implementing a four-day summer work week for the period of June 22nd, 2015, through and including August 7th, 2015. Yep, and then depending on, that's if the school year ends by June 19th, and the schedule varies if the school year should end later.
Thank you. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Yardlin, seconded by Mrs. Schmidt to approve the Memorandum of Understanding for Summer Work Week. Comments or questions from Board members?
Hi, Dr. Fard, can you share how much money we generally save each year by having this shorter work week?
Yes, we usually save somewhere between $14,000 and $15,000, and while it may not seem a lot, it's $14,000 or $15,000. So the energy savings from Thursday, the end of workday until we fire up the air conditioners again on Monday morning, it adds up, so that's pretty significant when we look at the total dollars over the past four years.
Right, now we change from five, eight-hour days to four, 10-hour days?
10 and a half hour days.
10, okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Yardlin. The next meeting will be scheduled for March 11th, as I understand, correct?
Yeah. We'll still need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Thank you for the correction. All right. Any other questions or comments for Board members?
Correct.
Not? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. Mrs. Yardlin?
Right, so, thank you. Next meeting is March 11th.
Thank you. Well, Academic Performance. The Academic Performance Committee did meet on February 3rd, when the major issues that night was additional proposals for the improvement proposals, including those at the various levels, elementary, middle, high school, and the K-12 proposal. We did vote on this on the 12th, but I would note that there have been some changes. Actually, the total has been slightly reduced. So tonight, we have a motion that would authorize the K-12 program changes for the 25, 2015, 2016 school year, and that would have been proposed originally at the November 24th meeting, and then more recently at the, should read February 3rd meeting, because the January 20th meeting was postponed. The total of the four sets of proposals is $251,381, and obviously, the implementation of this is contingent upon the availability of both budgetary resources and sufficient student enrollment in cases like the high school program. So I make that as a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moved by Dr. Yornel, seconded by Mr. Sarnese to approve the revised K-12 program improvement changes. Comments or questions for Board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. The next Academic Performance meeting will be held on March 16th here in this room, and at 7:30. The next committee meeting is Facilities, and that would be Mr. Casper.
Thank you, Dr. Yornel. Facilities Committee met last on February 12th. Tonight, there are two motions. First motion is to obsolete the items listed 1A through D.
Thank you. Do we have a second for the obsolete items list?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Casper, seconded by Mr. Vergomo to approve the obsolete items list. Comments or questions for Board members? Not? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. Mr. Casper?
Thank you. Second motion is to accept bids, uh, that is accepted, excuse me, motion to accept bids is listed below, related to Helmand Field Phase Two.
Do we have a second to the motion to accept the bids for Helmand Field?
I still move.
Moved by Mr. Casper, seconded by Mr. Demming to accept the bids, the four bids, general construction, HVAC, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing for the Helmand Field renovations. Comments or questions from Board members? Mrs. Miller?
I do, Dr. Yornel. I'm not sure if it addresses to either Dr. Radnick and Kathy Johnson. By my, the numbers that I have, Phase Two is going to cost with fees and permits $3.5 million, and Phase One was almost $2 million. We, it says we budgeted, it confirmed we were budgeting $3 million for the stadium, the field. How are we going to fund that excess, that excess $2 million? It's going to be, it's going to probably run out of $5 million, as the numbers are showing now. So how are we going to fund, how are we going to fund that additional $2 million? Where's that coming from? Who would answer that?
Do you want to take that, Kathy? I don't have that file right in front of me, but we went over this at the Facilities meeting.
I don't think we talked about funding or the money was coming from, did we, the extra $2 million?
We'll let Kathy go over that.
Actually, that will be coming out of part of our capital project dollars that we do have set aside for this particular project. As we know, the $2 million that we paid last year has already been, been reduced out of the capital projects, and we do have funds remaining in that particular project. I do believe we did discuss some of this in that meeting.
Well, we, we budgeted $3 million.
That's correct.
And as we- And we're going to be beyond the $3 million.
That's correct. So it's coming out of the funds that are in the capital projects, and not all the monies, the capital projects monies are, they float from year to year what we're going to spend on, so that as we move forward through other projects, in future years, we'll have to be making decisions. Are we going to do those projects, not do those projects? How much money are we getting back? We can really get some dollars back from the fees that we have set aside for contingency fees that come back. So, yes, that's kind of where we're, where we're at. It is set aside in the capital projects monies already.
So, other projects would not be done, is that what you're saying? So this is funded?
May not be done, or as we get through the end of the financial year, as we did last year, we were able to move monies over into capital projects from the general fund, so that those additional monies would be funded by those monies that we actually moved over. We actually moved over about 1.4, we're going to move over $1.9 million from the general fund, from excess fund balance. So that really is funding the additional $2 million this year.
So then the $10 million we borrowed, where is that assigned?
That's part of that too, that's part of the money.
So that is part of the money that's going to the stadium?
Yes.
There was the-
Mr. Casper?
Yeah, I was going to say one other thing. And we always talk about budgeting, and we do these bids, and it's sort of a number that they pick out there for these different projects. We have this book that's five-year plan, and this one, this one, they actually landed within $250,000 of, you know, their estimate, their guestimate. And the driver for this thing was $943,392,000 of adjustments that came in the form of stormwater, stormwater management. We still have almost $200,000 of allowances in there that could come back. There were additional water lines and hydrants and a pardon that we had to put in. It wasn't an option for, it started off as an option, but the township made it not be an option. So, right there's almost a million dollars that sort of, we didn't bank on it, pulled that number out, and, you know, the engineers came within quarter million, which is pretty good on, to me, on a scale that large. So that's my last two cents on that, and I think we had a motion and a second.
I have a-
Mrs. Yardlin?
Yes, sorry. At the last meeting, Mrs. Schmidt and I chaired the ad hoc fundraising committee, and so we've made some progress. I just wanted to have Mrs. Schmidt share the number again, the money that we've raised so far. The goal is to raise $2 million over 10 years, and then the money raised, anything raised so far would be used to pay the cost upfront, and then anything raised after that would be put back into the fund to replace the money that was spent on the stadium, so.
So like Mrs. Yardlin said, our goal is $2 million right now. As of right now, we have $143,000 committed. That includes several sponsorships through the Rams on the Ridge campaign, portion that's been committed for the Build It For Bud campaign, which is related to the proposed weight room, memorial for veterans, alumni from the school district who served in the armed forces and lost their lives in service. It's also including advertising and the payers, which are, there's still growth with the payers, with all of these, actually. So that puts us, like I said, at $143,000. The Build It For Bud campaign is $100,000. We're at about 70%, so if you estimate the $30,000, which that has been going extremely well, then that would put us at approximately $173,000. And like I, given these numbers at the Facilities meeting, when we started the ad hoc fundraising committee, we looked at other school districts and their successes to see how they did theirs, what they did, how successful they are. And with the $143,000 that we're at right now, we've far exceeded everybody that we've looked at so far. Okay, I'm sorry, how much of that, I understand you have 10 years, that donors have 10 years, so what is the money that we have, so is that $173,000 going to be paid over 10 years? Or is the payers are- Some of it is, some is not. That is some- Do you know what that percentage is? I understand- I don't have that. Like, for instance, I know- The payers would be, I understand the payers would be immediate. One of them, I do know, the $40,000 that is for the scoreboard, which they could have done over 10 years, they opted to do over five years. So it's on an individual basis, same with any of these contributions. You have up to 10 years, but I know, you know, that not all of them are opting for the 10 years, some are five years. We have received some of the payments already. I know on the scoreboard, we did. So the second payment will actually be coming, that came in 2014, the second one will be coming this year.
And there is a contract under the Finance Committee for a $4,000 sponsorship, and is that, am I correct that that's being paid all at once?
Anything under $10,000 is to be paid all at once. So once you add that money, we're probably over $32,000 or $33,000 collected so far, and then the other ones are coming in over a period of time. And like was said, the sponsors for the scoreboard are trying to pay it off much quicker. They have $8,000, and we just received another check for $8,000, so they have $16,000 in, and I expect them to check during this calendar year as well.
Thank you. I have one other question, if I may. It seemed like in the comments from the public, there was a, there seemed to be a connection that people were thinking that this 15% increase that's in the preliminary budget, which is not possible under the Act One guidelines, but that that is connected to the stadium. And I just wanted to clarify that the stadium project is coming out of capital funds and is not connected to the general operating budget and the, any sort of tax increase that would happen this year.
I'll clarify that.
Okay.
Because we did borrow $10 million for capital projects. The payment of that $10 million is actually a debt in the general fund, so while it's not directly paying $3 million out of the general fund for the stadium, there is money- not directly paying $3 million out of the general fund for the stadium, there is monies being paid from the general fund on that debt service. So not one for one, but yes, there are some monies out of the general fund that are paying for the debt service that we borrowed. Thank you.
Kathy, could I have a question, please?
Yes, go ahead, Dave.
Okay. How much, if that $10 million, if, I think you said $900,000 is the debt service payment per year for that $10 million, is that right or wrong?
Mr. Johnson, I don't have that information with me. I didn't know that was going to be a question, so I really can't answer that question for you this evening. I would have to go back and pull out the debt service amortization schedule to see what that is.
Well, the reason I'm asking that question is that we're talking about collecting this money over a 10-year period, and that is in effect how this stadium is going to be paid for. So if we're looking at the amount of the $3 million that will be applied to the stadium, it will be some percentage of that, and I would be interested in knowing how much, to have a positive cash flow in this thing, how close to covering the individual payment for this $3 million? You know, it would sound like maybe 30% of that 900, which would be $270,000 a year. How close would be, we'd be possibly coming to that if we're able to reach our goal of $2 million for the, for this effort? And I know you can't answer it now, so I just asked that question. Another, fast two questions. Did we hear from Thompson, the Thompson Toyota Group or Thompson Group, on whether or not they're, made any kind of decisions on supporting this or not?
Mr. Thompson, not yet. We sent them the information they requested.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. I would note that among the things that have been done from the capital projects over the past nearly a decade have been renovations on each and every one of our elementary schools, and those were done without borrowing. They were done essentially from the funds that had been accrued through fund balance from year to year. And I think that's important to keep in perspective, that the capital funds are not used just for buildings or for sports, but they are put to a variety of uses that benefit students in this district. At this point, do we have any other comments on this issue? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries 8-1. Mr. Casper?
Thank you. The next facilities, the next facilities committee meeting is scheduled for March 9th. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Sarnese?
Thank you, Dr. Yernell. The finance committee also met on February 12th as part of that joint meeting, and I have several motions for approval tonight. The first is a motion to approve the resolution to authorize administration to work with Public Financial Management, PFM, as financial advisor, and our bond counsel, Innsbourn Soul, and the local solicitor, which together makes the financing team in conjunction with the issuance of the Series A of 2015 bonds for the purpose of refunding prior debt.
Thank you, Mr. Sarnese. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Sarnese, seconded by Mrs. Yardley to approve the refunding motion. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. Mr. Sarnese?
Mr. Sarnese, I have one comment with respect to this next motion, which is concerning the parameters resolution itself. The district's bond counsel circulated some comments and revisions to this resolution, which didn't make it into the version that is currently in front of the board, but it did make it into the version that Dr. Yernell has for him to sign, assuming the board approves the resolution. The only substantive change was with respect to Section 3, which appears on page 5. The district's bond counsel pointed out to the vocational technical schools' bond counsel that, as originally written, the resolution extended the term of the bonds for another 30 years, and that's not the intent of the issuers. The intent is to continue with the current term and simply refinance them. So that change has been made to the version that Dr. Yernell has, and so assuming the board intends to consider and approve that revised version, I would just suggest that the motion re, motion to approve the parameters resolution as approved by the district's bond counsel.
Mr. Sarnese?
Thank you. And, okay, so I will make the motion as stated by our solicitor.
Do we have a second to the revised motion?
Thank you.
Moved by Mr. Sarnese, seconded by Mrs. Yardley, to approve the parameters resolution as revised. Comments or questions from board members? Not? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. Mr. Sarnese?
The next is a motion to approve the contracts, A through D, as listed in the agenda.
Do we have a second to the contracts motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Sarnese, seconded by Mr. Casper, to approve the four contracts as listed. Comments or questions for board members? Not? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. Mr. Sarnese?
The next is a motion to approve the master telecommunications and dark fiber service agreement with Sunesis.
Do we have a second to the Sunesis motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Sarnese, seconded by Mrs. Schmidt, to approve the master telecommunications and dark fiber agreement. Comments or questions from board members?
I have one comment to this document as well. We had reviewed this at the request of the administration, and we had requested that Sunesis add a termination for convenience provision, which typically we insert into these kinds of long-term contracts and allows the district to get out on relatively short notice. Sunesis was not agreeable to that, which in many ways, I think, is understandable. They're, they're funding this upfront and investing money in this expansion of the district's wide area network, and so does not want to invest that money and then have the district terminate the agreement within the first year or some short period of time. So this agreement is a bit more onerous in that sense than agreements that the district typically enters into. If the district does want to get out of this agreement, it's going to have to pay essentially a penalty, which in some cases will be the entire remaining term of that five-year agreement. So just, I wanted the board to build that into the equation. Again, it didn't seem unreasonable to me, but it's, it's in there.
Mr. Sarnese?
The next is a mo, do we vote on that?
No, not.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Mrs. Cross, yes?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions from board members? Not? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 9-0. Mr. Sarnese?
I think this is the motion actually for the five-year agreement, the next motion that Rob spoke about, and I think, I don't know, Kathy circulated a, okay, Kathy did a cost analysis, and I don't think they offer anything less than a five-year, and if we had to renew with Comcast at a substantial, it would be a substantial higher cost. So I think I'm willing to take the chance with the five-year. I think, you know, in the long run, the cost justifies the five-year agreement. And I didn't mean to imply otherwise. It's a business decision for the board. It's just a longer-term commitment than, than sometimes is typical. Not for this type of agreement, but just in terms of the district's agreements in general. I didn't mean to imply that it was an unreasonable term in the agreement. I just wanted to point it out. Thank you. So I'll make the motion to approve the Sunesis Service Order Agreement 2015-001 for $12,000 per month plus applicable taxes for the five-year agreement.
Do we have a second to that motion?